Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Authority to order. Today is Thursday, December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, 2017. It's just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center, Sierra Room, at 8:51 East Williams Street. Can we have a roll call for the record?
Good morning Supervisor Baugh, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Crowe.
Here, thank you. Can we call our good friend Pat Propster of the Calvary Chapel to get us started today? Good morning, Pat, how are you?
Good morning. Good, glad to hear that. It is Pearl Harbor Day, and at 8:55 a.m. Hawaii time, Japanese bombers bearing a red symbol on the rising sun of the Japanese wings appeared out of the clouds on the island of Oahu. A swarm of 360 warplanes followed descending on the U.S. naval base Pearl Harbor, a ferocious assault. The surprise attack was a crucial blow against the United States Pacific Fleet and drew the United States into a diplomatic battle as well as war World War II. Negotiations had broke down. President Franklin D. Roosevelt and his advisors knew that imminent danger was there, and it was a probability of attack, and increased security had not yet been done at Pearl Harbor. It was Sunday morning. With that in mind, I had a scripture that I wanted to read for us, and within the scriptures embedded several words that I think in our ever-changing world that we live in right now is always be ready, always be ready, no matter what. So with that, "If we suffer for righteousness sake, happier ye. Be not afraid of terror, neither of trouble, but sanctify the Lord in your hearts, and always be ready to give an answer to every man that asks you to explain the hope that you have, and do this with all meekness and reverence. Having a good conscience, whereas if people speak ill of you, or as evil-doers, do not be ashamed if they falsely accuse you because of your good conversation in Christ. It is better for you to suffer for doing well than for doing evil. For Christ also suffered for our sins, for the just as well as the unjust, and being put to death but quickened by the Holy Spirit." Lord, this morning, in memory of Pearl Harbor, that, Lord, that we would always be ready. We have an ever-changing world that we live in, and, Lord, we ask you that our hearts would always be ready, and not be embittered, not be anxious or fearful, but, Lord, be prepared. We would always be prepared. Lord, I pray for a blessing on our mayor, on the board of supervisors, on our first responders, on the sheriff's department, the firemen in this community, that, God, that there would be just such a readiness about us, but not a fear that would be there, Lord, that we would always live in hope and in strength. And especially at this time of the year, Lord, may that ever-loving hope in you increase in the precious and mighty name of Jesus, that we would have in this city as well as the cities represented in the United States, the merriest Christmas of all. In your precious name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, blessings. All right, we're now on item number four, public comment. Anybody want to comment? Mr. Dolly, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Dave Dolly. I'm the Carson City Assessor. Apologize for being here today, and I have a prepared statement because I didn't want to forget anything. I've been the assessor in Carson City for 15 years now. Prior to that, I was an appraiser for almost 10 years. So I've spent almost half of my life in the assessor's office, so I have a real passion for having the assessor's office function greatly and well-prepared. So this whole process has been confusing, so I'm just going to start my prepared statement. On December 2nd, 2016, I received an email from Mr. Mark Carter, who is one of the owners of ADS. ADS is a software company that the assessors and the treasurer's office have used for the past 34 years, 34 years, to calculate our property values and collect our property taxes. This email stated that the company would be closing their doors on December 31st, 2019. Because this affected 15 counties of Nevada, the assessors and treasurers decided to work together to select and contract with a new vendor. We identified 13 potential companies, but only three had all of the modules that we were looking for. We were looking for the tax collection system, the KAMA system, and the recorder system. We held demonstrations with the top three companies, conducted phone interviews, I'm sorry, phone and office visits for the top company. We also looked for complaints and lawsuits against all of those companies. There were only one company stood out as having complaints and a few lawsuits. All 15 assessors and treasurers selected one company and began negotiating with them. We negotiated and actually agreed upon a contract, but the representative of the company was unable to attend to be on the phone during the board meeting to approve it, so it was pulled. The contract actually did not have a lot of protection in for the county, so we decided to create a request for proposal to see what options were out there to protect the counties more. I need to emphasize that the software was far superior than any software we had seen up to date, except for one, one who responded to the RFP. The treasurer and I were assured many, many times that if we went through the RFP process to select a company, then the final selection would be left to the offices who are actually the end-users. That, in fact, would not be the case. We were told that the IT's role in the selection process was to make sure that the software would work with the existing software and hardware systems. In June of this year, the Carson City treasurer and I began working on the requirements that would be needed for the new system. Kimberly Adams and my office made copies of the forms and screens that we would need for the new system. We were told that we were going into too much detail, and that was not supposed to be part of the RFP process, that it was supposed to be a generalized process. Two companies sent in proposals. The companies were vastly different in size and technology. One company had the newest technology, yet is a small company, and the other company that was proposing is using a product that was designed in 2003, but is a larger company and is publicly traded. Please keep in mind again that we have used a small company for the last 34 years. We conducted demonstrations on both systems last week of October. One day was devoted to the company for the KAMA system, the other was to the tax collection system. Both the Carson City treasurer and I sat in on all four days. I as well had two of my employees sit in there because I wanted their opinion on it. Again, since June 1st, we were repeatedly told that we would be the final selection, the end-users would select the product. On Friday, November 3rd, the elected assessors, treasurers, and one IT director from Carson City, Douglas County, and Lyon County met to discuss the demos. It was clear that the IT directors were leaning towards the larger company, while the assessors from Lyon County, Carson City, and the Carson City treasurer adamantly requested the smaller company. Neither company met all of the requirements for the RFP. Because we were unable to come to an agreement with one company, we were instructed to identify our concerns that we had about the companies and the steps that we would take to resolve those. My concerns were that the larger company had been sued for breach of contract in a few states. Additionally, I had been told by many people that the customer service is substandard in the larger company. This was confirmed in one of the responses from the larger company when asked about the timeliness of the mandated Nevada legislative changes. The company stated, and I quote, "We would be willing to meet with the clients within 30 days after the legislative session ends to discuss the changes needed and the timeline." This is 100% unacceptable, as the Nevada legislature doesn't end until the first week of June, and our tax bills go out July 1st. A good reason, in 2005, the Nevada legislature passed AB 489 and SB 509, which is Nevada property tax cap laws. AB 489 was passed on April 6th, but SB 509 was not approved until June 14th. Again, we needed the software fixed within three weeks to send out tax bills. Additionally, in this company's service level agreement, it states that, and I quote, "A small number of properties won't calculate or load is a Level III priority. The goal is to have it resolved internally within four weeks and not distributed until the next fix." Again, that's unacceptable. If we have one property tax that, property that does not calculate, then there's a huge error. We have an opportunity to use the same software that the second-largest county in the state of Nevada is using and currently converting to. We could develop a program using the newest technology and well under the deadline. This other county is already in the conversion process and should be completely converted by September 2018. The Carson City treasurer and I have spoken with and expressed our concerns to Mr. Woodbury, Mrs. Frelick, Mr. Murano, Mrs. Raider, and each one of you. However, the Carson City treasurer and I have been told that the city will continue to move forward with formal negotiations with the larger companies despite our concerns. I truly believe that this is a huge mistake, and proceeding with this contract will cause problems with processing tax bills and valuing properties that the treasurers and I were elected to do. The assessor and treasurer's offices will be the main users of the software program, and we feel very disappointed that our opinions are being ignored. Members of the community will be the next users. Gail and I are also concerned that the general public will not have access to the same webpages and the same information and searches that are now available. In this time, when we are typically asked to provide more information to the public, limited access to the information could be problematic and reflect poorly on the city. I truly believe that Carson City is negotiating with the wrong company. If we are unable to go with the same KAMA provider that the second-largest county in the state of Nevada is currently converting to, then I request that the RFP be declared invalid, as neither company fully meet the qualifications of the RFP. Thank you.
Further public comment? Anybody? Public comment? Public comment? I didn't get that request that I know of.
Did Mr. Murano ask you for extra time?
Said you'd, said, he told me you'd be here, which you are, but I didn't get a request for extra time. But go ahead, let's see what goes.
It's going to take about 10 minutes here.
I'd appreciate it if you could be a little bit more abbreviated if you can. If you can't, we'll get from there. I didn't get, I didn't get the request for time.
You want to distribute these? I'm here to make a formal request that the Amendment Four item, which was on the agenda July 7th of 2016, that Mr. Bonkowski was found guilty of at the Board of Ethics, so he should be excluded from these discussions. I'm requesting that it be re-agendized with the full board, excluding Mr. Bonkowski because of his involvement. And these papers I'm giving you now are a sampling from about 800 pages from city archives and the state indot. And where we had the problem was on July 6th, 2016, Mr. Bonkowski had a liability of about $250,000 for hazard waste cleanup at the Red Hut property, property that he was leasing from indot, where the leaky gas tanks are. And that was on the agenda for July 7th. And Mr. Bonkowski made the motion and voted on that. And when Amendment Four was passed on July 7th, Mr. Bonkowski was exonerated from the $250,000 liability for the hazard waste cleanup. He has then, since he cleared himself of his responsibility on the indot lease, has sold the property to the Red Hut people. The leaky gas tanks are still there.
Are they leaking? Are they leaking?
Pardon me?
Are they leaking the gas?
Well, there's nothing in the tanks now. They've leaked before. So if any of that dirt there is moved with the tanks not being removed, they have to go through a whole new EPA test, and that property has to be sanitized. That estimate was from Resource Concepts, and the estimated for the cleanup would be about $250,000. There's a copy of Mr. Bonkowski's lease with indot in there showing that he had the liability for that. As a result of him being exonerated as passing of the Amendment Four, he was then able to sell the property to his tenant, which is the Red Hut Corporation or company. And the Ethics Commission found Mr. Bonkowski guilty of some ethics violations, but they cleansed him. My question is, on the Amendment Four...
Hang on, Mr. Vicarrel, I got, DA wants to weigh in here.
I just want to make sure that what Mr. Vicaro is alleging, these are just his allegations. If anybody's interested to find out exactly what happened with the stipulation, it's, you know, available.
There's a copy of the stipulation in your packet.
So I just want to make sure that that was a stipulated settlement. There was no finding of guilty verdict or anything like that.
Yeah, he pleaded guilty to an ethics violation. That's what he's guilty of. So he's not a clean supervisor, and he should not be party to this action. It should be re-agendized. My question to the DA's office, they have an ordinance or a statute that says that the DA can defend public officials in a lawsuit, which was formed over the ethics complaint. I don't see where they can accept defending him for his personal financial liability on a real estate transaction. They can defend him for whatever municipal laws he violated, but I think they crossed the line in defending him on his personal financial project. So if it's re-agendized, it would be a full board with full disclosure. I don't feel that when it was passed on July 7th, 2016, that a full disclosure was made to all of the board members. Mr. Bonkowski concealed his ownership from 2007 to 2016, never stating to any of the board members or the city people that he was the owner of that property with the leaky gas tanks. Patrick Penninger was the one that included the paragraph on Amendment Four to say that that hazard waste cleanup now is the responsibility of the city, that the city is accepting and holding indot harmless and whoever was on the lease of any financial obligation. So now the city inherits the cleanup cost of approximately $250,000. So if you will take the time to review the sample package that I've given you, which has a copy of his lease with indot and all of the time factors involved, it has the examination of the leaky tanks and expressing what the cause and so forth is, and then there's a copy of his ethics violation. And taking, if you review this package and take into consideration what I've given you as a sample, I could have brought you the 800 pages, which would have been ridiculous. You would have never been able to review that. So this is why I've given you the sample of what I've indicated, the ethics complaint, his ownership, his liability on the indot lease, what the cost of the cleanup is. So all of that is pretty much itemized in this sample copy. So I once again make that formal request that you reconsider and put it on a new agenda with full disclosure to each board member. And I'd like to bring Patrick Penninger back to this area because he lied to the Ethics Commission and said that him and Mr. Bonkowski had no dealings. There's a paper in here that shows that he did speak with the adjoining property owner in reference to the tanks, which is Mr. Bonkowski, under Greg Street Properties, or Brandy, or whatever he wants to go by. So he has a possible violation of perjury in front of the Ethics Commission. Any questions?
I don't see any. Want to weigh in?
Just for the record, again, these are just allegations that haven't been proven, and then we're not here to hear any of this evidence. This is just public comment, and as far as Mr. Vicaro's allegation that the DA was not to defend, he actually has authority to defend under two separate whole chapters of NRS.
And I asked you for those statutes, and you haven't given me those numbers yet.
Chapter 41 and chapter 252 of NRS.
Okay. I don't see anything more.
Could you give me that, please?
41 and 2...
41 and 252.
And that's NRS?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vicaro.
Thank you for the time.
You need help?
I think I can make it here.
Hang on, we've got somebody coming to help here. Just a second.
Chair's too low.
They're heavy. Okay, other public comment this morning? Anybody? We take public comment at the end. We'll also, we take public comment generally as we go through each agenda item as well. All right, so I don't see any more public comment, so then we'll close off this part of public comment. We'll take up item six, that's the approval of possible action of the minutes of November 16th, 2017. Everybody a chance to read them? Motion's in order.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for November 16th, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried, thank you. All right, on the agenda, I've been told that we're going to remove item 12A, which is, deals with the Carson City Airport. Any other changes?
No other change.
All right. Any changes from the board? Don't see any. For the public, let me just say, we're going to be doing, we have two sessions today, one this morning and one this afternoon. The golf course issue comes up at 1:30 this afternoon. We are scheduled to have a non-meeting meeting, that's kind of an odd way of saying, at a non-meeting meeting, with our attorneys regarding labor issues, right after the morning session, but we're going to move that to 1 o'clock this afternoon. So there'll be a meeting with our, our legal counsel, will be a closed meeting at 1 o'clock, and then at 1:30, we'll take up the other items that are on the agenda. Everybody okay with that? All right, everybody understand? So if you come here at 1 o'clock and the door's closed, you'll know what we're doing here. We're having our meeting with our lawyers on labor relation issues. All right. Let's now take up item number, take up the consent agenda. Any matters? Anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? I don't see anybody, any members of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda? I don't see anybody there. Motion's in order to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda consisting of items, all items under Agenda Item 8, 9, and 10.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, let's take up item number 13. This is for discussion to hear a presentation for the Nevada Rural Housing Authority on the results of the 2017 housing study. Who's doing this? Bill?
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't think you're capable, you shouldn't be up here this morning. You know, you're going, you're going to, where are you going tomorrow on a cruise? Huh?
Yes, we're...
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're leaving town on a cruise.
Yeah, so you're going to come...
Starting tomorrow.
Talk to us and then let us think good things about you while you're gone. All right, we're just kidding you.
I thought that was the most judicious way to handle this.
We're kidding you, but I'll let you know that, you know, it was Mr. Army back there who told me to rag on you.
I knew where that came from.
So now you know who to blame. Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir. Lee, did you want to mention anything, or I'll just get to it?
Good morning, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. Just to introduce, Bill Brewer and Jack White with the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. They'll go over the housing study. I do want to mention, I think, I think this is good information for us as discussions have come up about, over the past few months in particular, about various types of housing. Housing projects are coming up, maybe the need for housing downtown and those types of things. So I think this is a good piece of information that we can use going forward in the next year with some of the other programs and projects we might be pursuing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this morning. Want to introduce our housing study and what we've learned as we've taken a good look at the market here. A little information about NRHA, first of all, we were created in 1975 by the Nevada State Legislature. In 1995, some clarifications were made, and NRHA was made independent of the state. We're quasi-governmental agency now. NRHA is Carson City's housing authority. We administer the HUD Housing Choice Voucher Program throughout rural Nevada. We administer about 650 vouchers actively in Carson City right now. NRHA manages, administers a mortgage program that assists households in purchasing homes. Over the last 10 years, we've assisted about 600 households here in Carson City with about $100 million in mortgages. And we have a community development group that builds and maintains multifamily housing. We have almost 500 units across rural Nevada. 179 of those units are right here in Carson City. So we're actively involved in this community. We like Carson City, and this is where our office is located. We recognize the need for the collection of housing and economic data. Several years ago, 2005, we undertook our first housing study, which looked at counties all across northern Nevada along I-80 and Highway 50. From 2012 to 2015, we conducted several additional studies, taking a very close look at the rural counties, and then again at the Carson City area, the whole area around Carson City, and then the northern Nevada housing demand study based on the effect of TRIC and what was happening to the rural areas because of that. In late '16 and '17, we initiated a comprehensive update of all of our studies for all of the counties in Nevada, excluding only the urban areas of Las Vegas and Henderson, Reno. So every other rural area in Nevada has been looked at in terms of housing. These studies identified 35 unique rural housing markets throughout the state, the rural areas of the state. Our goal is to utilize this present model going forward so that we can update and use it not only to identify needs throughout Nevada, but to see if we're doing any good. As we initiate projects and work with communities to meet their needs, we'll be able to tell if we're making any headway. Our latest model is the most comprehensive so far. It includes all kinds of information, such as county, housing market, population and household counts, population household breakdown by income and by age, qualification and identification of overburdened renter and homeowner households, area employment and wage data, overview of housing that's for sale and rental housing throughout the markets, a survey of existing rental properties, a very useful tool for us, and a conservative analysis of demand. I want to emphasize conservative. As we've conducted these studies, we've conducted, instructed our contractor to take a very conservative view when calculating demand. As you know, rural Nevada is subject to very cyclical economic conditions. We didn't want to put numbers... We didn't want to put numbers out there that would get us into a situation where we would be overbuilt or saturate the market beyond reason. We looked at Carson City. We identified six specific housing markets. Two of those markets in the far east and the far west are very small in terms of population. Most of our other markets throughout the state have large areas of open county that we call the rest of the county. In Carson City, because of its size and the way those two rural areas are divided by the rest of the city, we just identified those as separate markets. But six separate markets. As we looked at that, we learned some interesting things. Carson City now has over ninety-five hundred renter households. Thirty-three hundred of those renter households are paying more than thirty-five percent of their income for housing. That means they're considered to be overburdened. They're paying more than typically they should be able to afford. Over nineteen hundred and forty of those renter households are severely cost burden, meaning they're paying more than fifty percent of their income for their housing. Over twenty-eight hundred homeowner households are paying more than thirty-five percent of their income for housing, and over eleven hundred of those households are severely cost burdened. Many of those households are seniors who've aged in place, who find themselves now in a difficult situation where they're truly cost burdened to be able to stay in their home. Unfortunately, they don't have anywhere else to turn to. What we know about rental housing in Carson City, over the last six years, the supply of rental housing in Carson City's increased by only a hundred and fourteen units. However, over that same time period, renter households have increased by almost ten percent, about eight hundred and thirty households. So, you can see the increased demand and pressure on the housing supply without offsetting construction to help meet that demand. Present median gross market value for rent, a market rent, is about a thousand thirty-five a year. If you go through the calculations to find out, I'm sorry, a month, thank you, Jack, thousand thirty-five a month, if you go through the calculations to determine what kind of income can be, can pay that affordably, that's, you're talking about an income of about forty-four thousand a year to be able to pay that rent on an affordable basis. The workforce rent value is about eight hundred and eighteen dollars a month. Again, working that backwards to an income that could afford that, you're talking about thirty-five thousand a year income to be able to pay for that. We're talking about working households. These are not welfare families or folks that are typically decried as living off the government or whatever the case may be. These are working households. The remaining renter households, not included in these categories, earning less than thirty thousand a year, totals thirty-seven hundred and ninety-one renter households, of which over three thousand are economically challenged to some degree. So, it's quite an issue out there. What we know about single-family housing in Carson City is that, again, the supply of housing over the last six, seven years has increased very slowly. Only a hundred and thirty-nine homes up through twenty sixteen. There's a demand that could be absorbed about sixty units a year in Carson City, and again, probably more than that if you looked at true demand right now. There is greater demand than that, but again, we've instructed our surveyor to take a very conservative view. This data indicates this supply of housing in Carson City may not be keeping pace with the households that are moving into town. Homeowner households earning less than forty thousand totals forty-eight hundred households, of which thirty-five hundred, almost thirty-six hundred, are paying more than thirty percent of their income for their house payment. Median home value in Carson City twenty seventeen was two hundred and forty-one thousand. Now, that's the median home value. To be able to afford a home at that median value, going through the calculations backwards, you need to earn almost fifty-nine thousand a year to be able to buy a home at median value. However, current listing, if you take the median price of listed homes right now, you're at three hundred and seven thousand dollars. If you wanted to buy a median-priced home on the market today, you'd need to earn over seventy thousand dollars to be able to make that, make the payment on that house. It's taken us a year to realign our housing study initiative. Accordingly, the data in our study now is about six months old. Occupancy in Carson City is right at a hundred percent. It's really at an unhealthy level. Typical market occupancy for rental housing would be somewhere between ninety-five and a hundred percent, based on turnover and that type of thing. There's, there's literally no turnover in Carson City. Every unit is filled. Housing markets, and Carson City's not alone. The markets in surrounding areas are experiencing the same thing. Douglas County, Washoe County, Lyon County, all experiencing the same kinds of things. Rents are increasing rapidly, forcing lower-income families out of housing that they've had for several years already. Our study indicates a current need of over thirteen hundred and fifty rental units right now. And overburdened populations in Carson City continue to grow at a rapid pace because of the increase in rents. So, if we build all that housing, who's it need to serve? Well, we need four hundred and twenty-five units at market rate to serve households that are eighty percent or more of median household income for the area. We need two hundred and seventy units that are designed to serve workforce households, serving households between fifty and eighty percent of area median income. And we need another six hundred and fifty units that would serve households below fifty percent of area median. So, that's a problem. What can be done? Well, there are several things that the city could do. Currently, there are two task forces organized, or two committees by the city, Carson City Behavioral Task Force. Those two subcommittees have been meeting for some time to examine the need for traditional housing, or transitional housing, and one to examine the need for affordable housing. These groups should be tasked with developing policy recommendations to the board that will enhance the development of affordable housing. Or, we would encourage the city to enter into an MOU with NRHA that could develop a task force and do a similar thing. But you have that structure existing right now. We would ask the city to encourage developers to participate in these forums and help create those codes or those recommendations that would help meet the defined demand, and to task these groups with the developing policy recommendations. There's federal and state assistance available through several types of programs, tax credits, home funds, state trust funds, and so forth. Those resources unfortunately are limited. They should be utilized to the maximum extent possible, but I can tell you, they're very limited. In fact, trust, or, excuse me, tax credits are the major tool to develop affordable housing throughout the state of Nevada. Nevada gets an allocation of tax credits each year that's adequate to develop about three hundred to three hundred and fifty units in the entire state each year. And as you might imagine, most of that money goes to Las Vegas, and just a little bit winds up in the rural areas of the state. So, our addition to the pool of affordable units is minuscule each year.
I understand, Bill, that the new market tax credit, if that applies, is also on the chopping block of the budget.
That's correct. New market tax credits may go away, and those have been another tool that could be used to help bring some affordable housing. You're correct, Mayor. We want to make the public aware of those needs and keep them informed and bring them to the table wherever we can. There are some things the city could do that would include things like granting priority and expediting approval of plans and specs relating to affordable housing. I believe the city actually does that already in most cases. The city could donate or long-term lease city-owned lands that would support the development of affordable housing. The city could establish a trust fund that would help support affordable housing. There are different ways that that trust fund could be funded and utilized, depending on how the city sees fit. Density bonuses and development impact cost reductions, such as fee abatements and those kind of things, also could be brought to bear to help support affordable housing. NRHA stands ready to assist the city in any way that we can, whether it's affordable housing needs. We want to make you aware of that, and look forward to working with the city and its many parts and groups to help bring recommendations back to you that will help. Any questions?
Well, it's a fascinating study.
It is.
Not certain if I want to take a break now and go out and cry. We've got some questions up here. Supervisor Bagwell, Bill?
Or I'll just maybe make a comment. I serve on some of those task forces for housing, and I think we did such a super job on Richard's Crossing, but I'd really like the city to, maybe in our January retreat that we put on the agenda, anything that we can do to look through our Title XV codes or other areas in which we can begin to help meet this need. I think we need to get ahead of the game instead of, you know, anything that we can do. So, if we can put it in our January retreat and start coming up with ideas, it would be great.
We'll do that. We'll talk about it. It's a good idea.
Okay.
Comments in order?
I think, though, that to be able to build any affordable or workforce housing, we have to solve two issues. First, workforce, which is nonexistent here, and secondly, the cost of construction. And I'm not sure what the solution to either one of those is, but those are major roadblocks in our particular area. We're not seeing those so much in Clark County or Washoe County, but in Carson City, we have really struggled with that. We have looked at the feasibility of putting up new construction, and we haven't been able to solve that, that cost of construction. We don't generate the rents. You can talk about where the rents are and how that overburdens most of our constituents, but the fact is that the rents still don't support the cost of construction. So, it's an interesting conversation.
I'm sure it is.
Well, it certainly is, Mr. Bonkowski, and couldn't agree more that that is a very serious problem. And one reason that we're bringing this to the city and would encourage you to consider it very carefully going forward, I know something like establishing a trust fund is not particularly palatable to a lot of folks. However, looking down the road toward the future of the city, if that's not done now, by the time that trust fund grows, there won't be any more real significant opportunities to be able to grow that through fees on development.
Why don't you talk a little bit about what a trust fund means, so everybody understands what you're talking about there?
Sure. So, just as an example, this is just an example. There could be ordinances enacted that would require developers bringing new projects to the city to make a portion of that development available for affordable housing, either single-family or multifamily housing, which would be great. Should the developer decide not to participate in that, they say, I'd rather not make a portion of my development affordable, then there would be a fee that they would pay to the city based on the numbers of units that we're talking about. That fee could go into a trust fund, and that trust fund could be used to support the development of other affordable housing, to abate costs associated with that, like Mr. Bonkowski was speaking of.
Just following up on that, and I don't want to go too deep in this. Are there, are there tax benefits that would be available for a developer to help offset that cost? I mean, if you, if you create an ordinance that requires a developer to donate or to contribute a certain amount to affordable housing, in order to help make them whole, are there tax benefits that they would get that could mitigate against that?
Great question, Mr. Mayor, and not necessarily tax benefits so much, but there are benefits that the city could provide, such as density bonuses, limiting or easing the limits on setbacks, that type of thing, that would allow them to increase the numbers of units that they could put on their proposed development, rather than, than keeping the big spaces between houses, that type of thing.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? It's a very fascinating study. Thank you, and I'm sure we've all, I know we've all read it already, and we're now digesting it again here.
If people want more information, where do they, where do they go to see the study or to get more information about it?
Thank you, sir. They should come to our website, nvrural.org. We'll have some of the information out there from the studies. If they want the full study, they just call our office, and we'll be glad to work with them.
I do, I'm sorry, I do have one last question for you here. On the, on the demand side, did you, did your study analyze the age group of the demand, of those making the demands?
Yes, we did.
And maybe you cross it here, and I was thinking about, so, well, tell me about that again, please.
Well, certainly, the fastest-growing cohort, population cohort in Carson City is the elderly population, over sixty-five. That's broken out in, I believe, ten-year bands, isn't it, Jack? So, we've, we've tracked that pretty carefully based on age. All cohorts are growing, but the fastest-growing population is over sixty-five.
You can look at overburdened, you can look at overburdened or just market-rate population in any, any group itself, on, on income bands and age and cross them. The studies actually cross those over, so we can actually tell you that within a certain part of town, one of the housing markets defined, what, what that age and income factor is by demand of overburden, so we could, we can actually focus on what kind of housing needs to go into, what kind, what part of town.
Is that, is that information, Jack? Is that available?
Yes, that is available.
Okay, so we asked you.
Available in the study, and a lot of, some of it is available on the summary pages we're creating on the website for each county.
All right, thank you. All right. Any, anybody? Thank you very much. Bill, have a good trip.
Thank you, sir.
Tell the army there that, you know, you need some time off, too. Dwight, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're going to solve the price issue, right?
I'm here.
I knew you would.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to make a couple of comments in addition to their presentation, which I agree with pretty much. I would just like to tell you that we own or manage over five hundred units here in Carson City alone, and right now, our waiting list is over six months. So, if you fill out an application for us, we tell you that it will be at least six months before we call you. Don't, don't call us tomorrow a couple of times because you're not moving up that quick. And it's very disappointing to tell people that, and I just wanted to share that with you because that's on-the-ground, the information back to you, that's what's really happening in Carson.
And again, where's the demand coming from, and from your perspective?
I, I don't know. I mean, I, we try to.
Is it age-driven, income-driven, what?
A, a lot of ours is income-driven because we are kind of at the lower end of the market. We've always prided ourselves as being affordable housing with, I don't think we have an apartment house. This, this survey shows that apartments are in the thousand. I don't think we have an apartment in town that's a thousand dollars. That's generally reserved for a house. Our houses run for, we have three-bedroom houses for ten fifty up to twelve fifty. So, we're in the lower income, and we find a lot of, it's a lot of the working class. We are doing that. We are taking a lot of Nevada Rural Housing vouchers, so we do have a lot of voucher programs. We have a couple of units now that the rates have moved up to nine hundred for an apartment, and that's a two-bedroom, two-bath with a single-car garage, but that puts them out of the voucher market. So, we see a lot of movement out there in this structure area. As much as I love everything, I'm refinancing one project now with HUD, and I've just gone through the nightmare from hell. I, I just can't believe HUD, who wants to provide affordable housing, is so difficult. But I mean, they are the most difficult, this, I've been doing loans for, what, fifty years on apartments, and I've never had a HUD loan. We did HUD Housing. We built houses and financed them under HUD, and we knew they had a lot of criteria, and we met that. But the houses, the unit I'm refinancing, and, let's see if I talk about it, will they deny the loan? It's a corneage of, corner of College Parkway and Airport Road.
Well, I think, you know, you don't have to talk about the loan.
Well, all I was just trying to say.
Tell us about the problems you've had, because I suspect some of us here are going to write to HUD.
What's the link on that?
No, no, I can't. No, no, I can't. And I'm in it too far. My point is, is that I'm cautious of government-type programs. Under this, under HUD, ADA standards are here. You've got to meet fair housing standards for HUD, and that's here. I'm actually having to go in and modify the two ADA units that we built just 15 years ago to meet fair housing. And the sinks in the kitchen all have to be lowered, they've got to have the clear radiuses to turn around, but all of the units have to be that way. And I'm going, okay, that's the mentality that bothers me. So when we come to Carson City, and you're going to build new units, do all of the units have to be this way? What are we doing to make things more affordable-type situation? And all I just caution us is to be careful. I'm trying to build 12 units right now in Carson. The rents are projected at $7, $750, brand-new, two-bedroom, two-bath, and we've had to redesign the buildings, we've had to move it, we've had, I mean, it's a place where I want to throw my hands and scream, and it's nobody's real problem, with the exception that this is in a spa district out behind Slotworld that Walt Sullivan created 25 years ago, and so now we've got all this criteria of this spa, and I'm going, I don't know that it makes it any better, in my opinion, but it sure costs me a lot more to do it, so my rents have to be higher. And that's, let me give you another example. It's not you, but let me just give you an example. We're getting ready to build apartments in Dayton. If you put a washer and a dryer in the unit, the hookup fee for the sewer is $4,000 more. $4,000. And we're talking about 100 units, we're talking about $400,000 to put the washer and dryer in the unit instead of in a little building out here where they've got to get out and walk out to it. The concept, people who have washers and dryers wear cleaner clothes? That's the logic I'd come to. I don't know. But I'm just saying, that's an example for us as a city to look at and say, what are we doing that may be the same sort of maybe ridiculousness as that we don't follow what's really going on? And I just caution that, but I just wanted you to be aware of the demand is really, really there. I mean, we have people begging us, can't you do anything for me? And, you know, no, I see you're living in your car, how's that working out for you? And that's about it. So I just wanted to present that to you, because it is critical, and we're finding, I'm not finding the impact coming from the east yet, as everybody's talking about. We don't see, we don't think that that's the real issue yet, even though that's the big tank on the horizon that's probably going to come over and nail us sooner or later.
Well, it's good to have information from that side of the ledger. Thanks, Dwight. Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in on affordable housing? Anything? Okay, I don't see any. Are we ready to move off this in, board? I don't see any. Okay, so let's take up item, the next item, then. Thank you very much, folks. Thanks. Thanks, Gary. Let's take up the possible grant from the Foundation Forward, Inc. This is a request to install a Charters of Freedom monument in Carson City.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. Dan Stuckey, city engineer for the record. So I'll just give a brief intro. This is for consideration to accept a gift from Foundation Forward to install a Charters of Freedom monument in Carson City. I'm joined here by the Foundation Forward founder, Vance Patterson, and then, if this project moves forward, Darren Anderson, who will be the project manager from the city side for this project. So Vance will get in much more detail about the project, but it's basically these monuments, limestone or granite monuments, to display the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, and the Constitution. Staff has identified the plaza area in front of the courthouse as an ideal place for this, these monuments to go. Staff has coordinated with Maxine Cortez over at the courthouse and the judges, and they are in full support of this project. We think it's going to be a really good project and a good thing for Carson City. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Patterson to go over the process.
Good morning, and welcome to Carson City.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I appreciate your time. I know these agendas are tight, and it's difficult to get on them, so I really appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to me. My name is Vance Patterson. I'm from Burke County, North Carolina. That's in the western part, about halfway between Hickory and Asheville. I'm a father of four, married 43 years to my wife, Mary Jo. I'm a businessman. Somebody groaning. That's unusual. I'm a businessman. I have a company that makes industrial fans. We actually make things out of metal, ship them across the country and around the world. I'm a manufacturer. I'm going to tell you a story, lasts about six minutes, then give you an idea of what this setting looks like, how it's done, and give you a very brief vision of what I see happening later. And here we go. About six years ago, my wife and I were up in Washington, D.C., visiting with some congressmen and some of the organizations up there. We had some free time, so we decided to go over to the National Archives, because we'd never seen the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution before. Now, for you that have been there, you know, you're kind of wandering down this hallway, looking at different exhibits, and it opens up into this big room. You walk through these big bronze gates into this rotunda, and there are the founding documents on the other side. Declaration of Independence on the left, this is looking down on it, four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and Bill of Rights on the right. These are the founding, the original founding documents that you're looking at. Now, one of the things I liked was, when you got in the room, there were no lines. You just wandered around, looking at different displays, and when you got a chance, you stepped up and looked at the documents. And I don't know about you, but the first time I saw the Declaration of Independence, something our founding fathers had actually penned, and then saw their signatures, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Rutledge, Wilson, and the others, I just got goosebumps. And then when I moved over and saw the first page of the U.S. Constitution in the words, "We the People," I actually got a lump in my throat. It was really an emotional experience for me. Looking at the Bill of Rights, you need to know something about this. There is no historic document known as the Bill of Rights. What's on display up there are the first proposed 12 amendments. The first two were not ratified at the time, only the next 10, and those are your Bill of Rights. Well, my wife likes to read just about everything, so while she's going around and reading the supporting documents, it gave me a chance to step back and kind of soak in the moment. I wanted to remember the feeling I had when I saw these documents. And two things occurred to me. First of all, that I'd probably never be there again, because it took me over 60 years to get there the first time. And second, that most people would probably never see these documents. Even though it's free and open to the public, there's just so much to do up in Washington. All the other monuments, the museums, the government buildings, that people just don't get a chance to get over to the National Archives. And then, when Mary Jo was finished reading, we left. Now, I ran for U.S. Congress in the western part of North Carolina, in the 11th District, back in 2012. And I tell people, I never studied so much in all my life as when I was running for U.S. Congress, not in high school or college. Because, see, we were sometimes having two and three debates a week over 17 counties, and they were asking questions about the environment, and immigration, and the economy, and taxes, and the Federal Reserve, and government structure, and other governments around the world. And to me, embarrassment is a tremendous motivator. I didn't want to be in front of a group of 150 people and not be able to address a subject for at least two minutes, so I studied evenings and weekends. Well, of course, one of the topics they asked about was education. So I went back and did some research, and learned that we had two founding fathers who are very big on education. Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson. Benjamin Franklin was an author and musician. He was a printer, political theorist, postmaster, he was an inventor, and truly a sage. He was the one they would go to if they had problems and needed some wisdom. And Thomas Jefferson, of course, third president of the United States, actually penned most of the Declaration of Independence. He was a farmer, he was an inventor, and he was also a businessman. One of the few things he made money at was a nail-making business he had, so he was a manufacturer. Well, these two believed that there ought to have three levels to education. A primary level to teach our youth how to function in life, and that's where you get reading, writing, and arithmetic. Then a secondary level to teach our youth how to survive in the world, and that's where you get into accounting, the living languages, geography, history, and some of the trades. And then the advanced level, that's where you get into science, arts professions, and what's known as a culture of virtue. Well, it's no surprise they were very big on civics and government. After all, they laid out the form of government that we have today. They believed that in order to have a free and independent society, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. Well, towards the end of my campaign in 2012, Mary Jo and I were attending a National Day of Prayer service on the old Burke Courthouse Green in downtown Morganton, and we were sitting under the shade of this tree here, and towards the end of the service, the thought came to me, what if I could duplicate the experience we had up in Washington? What if I could bring that experience back to the citizens of Burke County? And so after the service ended, I told Mary Jo about it. We actually wandered around the green and looked for possible settings for the first sighting, first setting. And later that year, after my campaign ended, I tell people, there were 11 of us to start with. I came in second. There was a runoff, and I came in second again. The guy that beat me was a guy named Mark Meadows, who's in charge of the Freedom Caucus now. No comment. So later that year, I started working-
Might have been lucky.
Oh, very, very fortunate to not have been up there the last six years. So later that year, when I had some free time, I started working on a project, and it turned out to be this educational project. And the scope of the project was to design and build a replica of the Charters of Freedom as exhibited in the National Archives, and put it in a central location in Burke County. It had to be central to the community, have high visibility, easy access for schoolchildren. I wanted to build all three settings, display all three documents, Declaration of Independence on the left, four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and Bill of Rights on the right. This is the site that was selected. It took over two years to get this done, even though it was a gift to the community. One of the problems was, this was the mayor's Christmas tree that you're looking at, so we had to do something with that. You know how that goes. Yeah. And this is what the site looked like. July 3. We moved it. We did plant another one, off to the side. So, and actually, these flagpoles are in this picture, so it really opened up this side of the courthouse. We dedicated it July 2, 2014. Again, Declaration of Independence on the left, Constitution in the middle, and Bill of Rights on the right. This is the steps involved in doing a setting. This is Hanover College, Hanover, Indiana, this last year. We excavate, go down three, three and a half feet in the ground, set up rebar, pour, so it's a reinforced poured concrete foundation, then come up into a core, again, reinforced poured concrete. That centerpiece that the Constitution will be on weighs over 38,000 pounds, over 19 tons. In the back is a vault for a time capsule. In that time capsule goes letters from local government, from Education Department, military, law enforcement, there'll be some from us, and other memorabilia. It'll then be sealed, won't be opened until September 17, 2087, which is the 300th anniversary of the U.S. Constitution. All vaults will be open the same day, so it ought to be an interesting time if anybody gets there. The core is then surrounded by a fascia of four inches of granite, another five tons. There are six documents. Each document is on quarter-inch etched bronze. They are life-size, which makes the Declaration of Independence a little bit larger than the other ones. Documents are then covered by a half-inch of treated polycarbonate. It's unbreakable and bulletproof. Tell people, please don't try it. And this is what the final dedication looks like. This was Columbia, South Carolina. This is a limestone structure in Jacksonville, Illinois. And this is what it's about. From the beginning, it is about education, providing access in a local community to these documents, because most people don't get a chance, a long way to Washington, D.C. from here, I'm sure you know that, but it gives you local access in your community.
Took Supervisor Bagwell 40 hours to get back from D.C. to Carson City when we went back there a month ago. So it's a long way.
Lot of time to talk.
A lot of time to sit in the airport.
I tell people to imagine, if you will, schoolteachers taking their classes down there, third, fourth, fifth grade classes on annual field trips, to learn a little about our founding fathers, about the founding documents. While they're there, they can learn about state and local history, and also local heroes. This is Commissioner Joe Belcher in Asheville in Buncombe County, North Carolina, took a group of fifth graders down. He was amazed at the interest they took for two hours in learning about these documents. These kids really thoroughly enjoy this type of experience. During my presentation and during the dedication, I tried to avoid using the term "monument," because I looked up the definition of a monument, and it is a memorial to an event or a person. And this is not a memorial. This is an active, hands-on educational supplement to your school's curriculum for your schoolteachers to take these kids down there, to let them learn and have hands-on. I like this when the kid's got his tape on his eyes, you can't see it that well. I call this picture "We the People," because these are our future generations looking at these documents. This fifth-grade class now knows more about our government, the founding fathers, and our founding documents than most people in the United States, just because they spent that trip down there. I've got a brief video here that kind of wraps things up. If I can get to it. Where was it?
Presentations.
You see it? Yes.
Needs some sound. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't get to go to Washington, D.C., and see our founding documents.
So many people that I talk to don't know what the Charters of Freedom are. When we explain, they say, oh, yeah, 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 I've heard about those. It's very important that the students not only know about the history, but why they should have pride in these documents.
Back in 2011, my wife and I were up in Washington, D.C., visiting with some congressmen and some of the organizations up there. We had some free time, so we decided to go over to the National Archives. You walk through these big bronze gates into this rotunda, and there are the founding documents over on the other side of the room. These are known as your Charters of Freedom. The first time I saw the Declaration of Independence, something our founding fathers had actually penned, and saw their signatures, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Rutledge, and the others, I just got goosebumps. I remember the thought came to me, what if I could duplicate the experience I had up in Washington, the first time we saw the Charters of Freedom? What if I could bring that experience back to the citizens of Burke County? Then, on July 2, 2014, we dedicated the first Charters of Freedom monument outside of Washington, D.C.
From an educational standpoint, for our children to actually see it within their home counties, be able to touch it, feel it, and view it, it's a huge deal for veterans, as well as for our children.
Imagine, if you will, third- and fourth-grade schoolteachers bringing their classes here for annual field trips to learn a little about the documents, a little about our government, our founding fathers, and also about state and local history while they're here.
I think with the educational system, teachers and educators are sometimes limited by the materials and just time, so to be able to provide teachers with the educational materials that they can use to kind of focus their visits to these sites, that's exciting to me.
When they talk of their Charters of Freedom in their hometown, remembering that their fourth-grade schoolteacher took them down and taught them about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence, we're in the beginning of what could be a massive reeducation of our founding principles.
Our goal as a foundation is to set monuments in as many communities as possible over the next nine years, to provide access to our founding documents in the communities, so that children and people of these communities don't have to go all the way to Washington, D.C., to experience these documents in a proper setting. But they will no longer talk about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington, they'll be talking about their Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with right in their home community.
fourth grade schoolteacher took them down and taught them about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence, we're in the beginning of what could be a massive re-education of our founding principles.
Our goal as a foundation is to set monuments in as many communities as possible over the next nine years, to provide access to our founding documents in the communities so that children and people of these communities don't have to go all the way to Washington DC to experience these documents in a proper setting. But they will no longer talk about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington. They'll be talking about their Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with, right in their home community.
Yeah, so we've got a question up there.
Yep.
I want to thank you for that. This is tremendous. And I guess I just have some housekeeping questions with regards to this, simply because, not that this is public art, but we're going through that public art process, policies and procedures. How does the city take ownership? Who's responsible for maintenance and budget on that aspect? And then is this going over existing concrete in front of the courthouse, or are we pouring new slabs for this? So, Public Works?
As far as the concrete, we would have to cut out a section of concrete and then excavate below to prepare the site. And then they would, they would pour the foundation for these monuments. As far as, I believe, were you going to go over the process of kind of the fundraising-
Yeah, just real quickly, this is my approval process that I've got up here. What I'm doing today is proposing that you all consider accepting this as a gift. Once that is done, you all provide a location that's agreeable. The city does, needs to do the site preparation. And by that, I mean you got to move that Christmas tree or some of the concrete so we can start our work. There may be power lines or something like that underground. That's their responsibility. Then we do all the excavation. We do the excavation, the setting of the, of the monument. And once it's finished, then we have a dedication ceremony, which you saw that we work with you, and we, we turn it over as a gift to the, to the city of Carson in the name of the children and citizens of Nevada.
And who takes care of maintenance after that?
Well-
It would be, yeah, it would be the Carson City, the staff here, so the city would be responsible, yes.
Parks, parks-
Public Works.
Okay.
Facilities.
There is very little maintenance. The one that you saw had been in for three years, and it looks like the day it was put in. These are built to last 300 to 500 years, if you just take a little bit of care of them. And interesting, you know, I don't want to shoot myself in the foot, but we were always concerned about, you know, graffiti. And we've got 13 of these in right now. There's been no graffiti in the last three years, which, way to go, people.
Vance, two questions for you. First, how did you select Carson City? And secondly, where does the funding come from on your site?
Chuck, over here, you want to tell them?
My name is Chuck Slaven.
You can just go to the-
My name is Chuck Slaven. I have a real interest in the Charters of Freedom documents, love to see it in Carson City. I happen to be talking with my friend Ken Brown, who has a similar interest, and we would be glad to undertake fundraising required to make this happen for Carson City.
There are 3,142 counties, boroughs, parishes, independent cities, census zones, and the District of Columbia in the United States. And our goal as a foundation is to put as many, put settings in as many of those communities as possible. What really appeals to us about Carson City is that it's a state capital. And my wife and I will stand behind the funding of whatever's needed to get it put in here. And it would probably be a granite setting. If you look through the information I gave you, one of those granite settings is over $70,000. But we would like to, you know, gift it to any of the state capitals around the country. And since Chuck brought us in here and you all have an interest in being a state capital, the funding's in place.
Tell us again about when the delineation of the line between what's the city responsibility and what's Chuck's, what are your responsibility in terms of cost of preparation? And when is that, I mean, did I hear you say that we cut the, we cut the cement, and then you'd take all, take, you're responsible for the other costs after that?
Yes.
So that's all we do is cut this, cut this-
Well, and any landscaping afterwards.
Okay, I got that, all right.
You know, if you want to put in park benches or something like that, or lighting, or electrical, or anything like that.
Any, any thoughts on what that costs?
To basically cut out the concrete, I mean, I would estimate, I mean, something our, our staff could do here at the city, I would estimate, you know, $1,000, $2,000.
All right, we're talking that-
Pretty minimal cost.
Vance, understand we're talking that kind of level of funding for the city. Still on board?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And, and what happens is, it's in your document there, you all decide on a location, and we agree to it, and then we exchange letters. Letter of intent that we will gift this to you, and you send us a letter saying you will accept the gift. And then we, then we start. Once the ground falls-
And the site we're looking at right now is courthouse, right? Just so everybody knows, I've talked to the judges and I've got backs back there. And to talk to the sheriff and the DA, they're all in favor of doing this. I mean, if we can do it out in that plaza there. And I know Chuck has looked at doing stuff at the state level. Frankly, it's probably too many hurdles to get done at the state level, put it in front of the Capitol, which would be nice. But I think that where we are, if we put it in front of the sheriff's courthouse there, that's where a lot of people, that's where the Constitution meets the road. So it's a pretty, pretty good place in my view.
You just want to make sure it's easy access for schoolchildren and high traffic and a lot of visibility.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else, Board? Public? Anybody?
It really is a fun project.
Yeah. Let me just say, for veterans out there, if you have a veteran's ID card, you get head of the line privileges if you're back in DC, because it's a, it's a long process to get into the National Archives. But you, if you have a veteran's ID card, you get head of the line privileges.
This last picture I have up here is the cannon salute for the Articles of the Constitution. These are the county commissioners in Richland County, so each of you would be asked to fire the cannons at the dedication. It's a lot of fun.
I don't know, Supervisor Barrett, you want to take over the cannon firing?
Oh, yeah, firing cannons is fun. Could, could you tell me how you chose or how it came that you got to Jacksonville, Illinois? And then I'll tell you why, I'm curious about that.
Oh, we did the first three in western North Carolina. And rumors started that I was running for Congress again. And I think my wife was starting to get nervous. So we decided to go north, and that was the fourth one we did in Jacksonville. That was my wife's hometown.
Oh, I see, okay.
She grew up there.
Well, my father went to college there 100 years ago.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, real nice community. All the roads are very straight.
Okay. Laurie? Go.
Okay. So with honor, I would like to move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of intent to Foundation Forward, Inc., stating acceptance of the gift on behalf of the citizens of Carson City.
There's a motion in a couple, all four seconds, right?
There you go.
All of a second, okay. And, and that includes a site at the, at the courthouse, correct? All right. Dan, you need anything else?
No, it's fair.
All right. All right. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried, unanimous. Thanks Chuck, thanks Ken Brown. Thank you, guys.
How long?
Thank you, Polk Works folks.
How long before it's here?
Oh, how long?
How long? Like, six months, a year? Where are we at? Sorry.
How long will it take?
The fabrication, you got to decide what material, probably be granite.
The, I got to decide on the material, probably be granite. You know, will be some discussion on that. Fabrication usually takes about six weeks. The setting takes two or three weeks. So it's, it happens pretty quickly, yeah.
It may be done by next May, then.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
As long as the ground's not frozen.
Yeah, right. Well, we got to watch that. Okay, that's good. Thank you. All right. Kenny or Chuck Slaven, you want to say anything? You okay? All right. All right, guys. Why don't we take a break, then? We'll be in recess for about five or 10 minutes and go from there.
One year. We're now going to take up item number 15. This is possible action to appoint one member to the Airport Authority, the manufacturer position. As usual, I'm going to say, even though I'm retired, one of my former partners, Steve Takeus, still works there. He's a personal friend and I usually stay out of these things. I don't know how much longer I'm going to stay out of these things because it's getting pretty distant. But for this one, I'm going to just say I'm going to disclose and not vote. Okay? So I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem.
Welcome, John. How are you?
Great. And you today?
Good. So the procedure is we'll all ask you a few questions. And I'll start first with why you want to do this. And then I'll ask you a second question to follow.
Great. Okay. I'm John Rogers. I've been a resident of Carson City for about 35 years, raised my family here. I'm a manufacturer by avocation. And I've been working primarily in the aerospace industry, making parts and, you know, servicing or making parts that make airplanes go. I've spent quite a bit of time up in Seattle in the Boeing factories and, you know, they're all over the country and the world, talking to aircraft manufacturers or dealing with aircraft manufacturers. So that's a little bit about my background. I recently retired from my primary business in July 1st of this year. Yes. And so that freed up a chunk of my time and I said, you know, I would like to use some of that time to, you know, make a contribution, give back to the Carson City community. And so I started nosing around looking for what that might look like. And I thought that the Airport Authority might be a good match for my business background.
Great. Thank you. And I used to live in Seattle, too, at the time when the last person to leave Seattle, please turn out the lights, when aircraft wasn't doing so well. What do you see as a positive in terms of operations at the Carson City Airport currently? And what do you want to see improve for the economic vitality of the airport?
What I like about the Carson City Airport is how well you've done land use around the Carson City Airport. I mean, the airport can operate in a way that impacts the minimum number of people. And I think that that's fantastic. I also love that it has through-the-fence access. I know that that's controversial from an FAA standpoint, but I think that that opens up the area of influence for the airport and presents economic opportunities for the airport. And so what I think what the airport's missing mostly is a sense of connectedness to the community, shall we say? I think that the airport seems to operate in a, you know, in a little bit of a silo. It's like the airport operates primarily for the benefit of the people who are really, really close to the airport. And I don't think the airport's ever been recognized for what it is, is a part of the transportation infrastructure of the city of Carson City. You know, it's a way for people to enter and leave our community. And I think that that hasn't ever been integrated fully into the way the airport thinks about itself. So what I, from operationally, I think the airport is very well situated, very well organized. What I think the airport is missing mostly is a real sense of self as it relates to the community. I think that it needs to be, the community and the people who run the airport need to think of it more as an integral part of the transportation infrastructure of the city of Carson City.
Great perspective. Thank you. Brad?
Good morning, John.
Good morning.
My question for you is Carson City is, the Airport Authority is in the process of searching for a new manager. What are your thoughts on management of the airport? And what do you think their primary focus should be?
I think the primary focus of the next airport manager should be business development of the airport. I think that the actual managing of the day-to-day functions that occur at the airport is not really a full-time job. I think that there's room to do that and to get involved in identifying the correct marketing approach, the correct market development approach for the airport. And so I would love to see the next airport manager have a real entrepreneurial bent. You know, somebody who thinks, you know, who sees the potential for that asset and has some experience and brings some experience in how to take assets and turn them into economy, you know, into benefit for the constituents.
Lori?
My question, kind of, let's see if I can... Yeah, I'm like, darn it! Okay, let's see if I can come up with something a little different, then. Carson City is considering asking the legislature to change the appointments for the members of the board from a four-year term to potentially an eight-year term. What do you think about that? Do you think that you need longer on the board or less time? What's your thoughts concerning that?
I think that four years is adequate to make a substantial impact for a person who brings energy and, you know, brings their best effort on a regular basis. I think you can make a significant impact in four years. You certainly can make a greater impact if you can maintain and, you know, and bring that energy for eight years. I think that the eight-year term might be a limiting factor for some applicants. You know, there might be some people that say, ooh, that's too long. I think, so I kind of, if you made me pick, I'd pick the four years because I think it seems like a more reasonable, shall we say, commitment for a potential applicant than that eight-year commitment, even though a person who gets involved for four years and loves what they're doing is almost, you know, I would say would be very likely to stick around for eight years.
I'll clarify, just so I was not getting it wrong, but four-year with an opportunity for another four years. Because currently, you can only have one four-year term. So we're considering whether we could reappoint someone so you wouldn't have to say for the whole eight if you don't want to.
Oh, if that's the case, then definitely. I would say it's a good idea because I think that, you know, and, you know, as a person who's done entrepreneurship my whole life, I think that, like I say, four years is a time where you can have a significant impact, but in eight years, you can really put an imprint on an organization or operation that you're excited about.
John?
So now the question is, why are you not applying for the job as airport manager? I'm being facetious at this point. But you have that entrepreneurial background. How would you help the new manager, if the person who came in fit the criteria you're talking about, with your entrepreneurial skills? Because it's obvious that business development is what's needed out there.
Yeah. What I think, what I see missing is the very, is the foundation of a business, which is clarity of purpose. You know, what I would like to help the new manager determine, what is it that is a differentiator for the Carson City Airport? Why would anybody want to come to the Carson City Airport and not one of the other general aviation airports in the area? And right now, on the website, the website, you know, says, oh, the thing that's great about the Carson City Airport is it's in the capital and it's got cheap gas. And I'm not so sure that that's a compelling enough differentiator, set of differentiators to actually grow a business with. I think we're going to have to come up with something better than that. And I think that's what, I think that's what I would be really excited to help the new manager to do is to figure out what that better, what the better deal is that we're going to offer to the community and to the users of the airport.
A good answer. Speaking of transportation, I never stop at the places that say eat here, get gas.
Well, you know, I actually think that the get gas part is weak, is particularly weak as a differentiator. But being in the state capital, I don't think so. I don't think that's a particularly weak differentiator. I think that that has a lot of potential to be exploited if it's used properly. But in order to be used properly, I think it has to be coordinated with all the other economic development agencies in the area. I, you know, I mean, I just still, it just blows my mind that you have, you know, people that are, have enough disposable income so that they can own or fly an airplane, or maybe own or fly a jet, who come in and out of the Carson City Airport. I don't know why people wouldn't be standing in line wanting to market services to those folks. I mean, this, you know, this is, you know, these are people who, if you were doing, you know, economic development relative to, you know, getting people to come to our community, this is some premier quality of, you know, potential visitors. And so I don't see why that shouldn't be possible.
John, thank you very much. And you're welcome to sit and listen to the other candidate be interviewed, if you would like.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Either, Adriana, you may be able to answer this, or maybe Nick will need to answer this. Both applicants today are not currently manufacturers, but both are eligible for the manufacturing position because we had no manufacturers that applied. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we've done that in the past.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Welcome, Doug.
Good morning.
The process is each one of us will ask you some questions. And I will start by asking you why you want to do this, and then I'll follow up with another question.
Okay. My name is Doug Campbell. I'm recently to Nevada from California. I've been here 16 months, working for the state in an IT manager capacity. I've been a pilot 35 years, owned an airplane for 30. Typically, after I get into a community like this, I want to begin participating at a service level. So I'm active with the Western Nevada College Curriculum Board. I've done that before in my career. And I saw the opportunity for contributing on the airport, which is one of my passions on a personal level. So I thought I would offer myself for that position.
Now, my question for you is, what do you see as positive in terms of operations at the Carson City Airport now? And what do you want to see improve for economic vitality of the airport?
I've reviewed the master plan. It looks like the next step for the Airport Authority would be the new version of the master plan. I see the extension that was recommended 20 years ago in the master plan has not been completed yet to allow larger aircraft to utilize the airport. I would think that would be a focus of changes that would be necessary for the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning, and thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate it. Currently, under the law, the airport positions are limited to one four-year term. We're considering recommending changing that to allow two four-year terms. What do you think the benefits are of allowing two terms versus one term? Or do you see it as a benefit?
I can see the benefit of some continuity on the authority since I assume folks are rotated in at different times. So having some continuity across the agenda would be useful. Since it is a volunteer position, I don't see any negatives associated with one or two terms. one or two terms.
We've had problems in the past over the economic vitality. The airport does well enough, but it's not exactly a huge revenue generator and doesn't necessarily hook up with the community in terms of generating a lot of economic activity. How would you help, and you probably know that we're looking for a new airport manager, and one of the things we've talked about is that person could do a better job of business development. How would you help them with suggestions as to bringing in economic vitality at the airport itself that would benefit the city as well?
Obviously, having some kind of commercial aviation available from the airport would improve the use by the community. Possibly instituting some kind of hop between here and Vegas would significantly increase the traffic to the airport. There seems to be an opportunity for additional hangars at the airport to store more aircraft. There's a lot of outside storage that's inappropriate in the weather that we have here. Those are the two things that come to mind.
Brad?
Good morning. As John mentioned, the authority, the Carson City Airport Authority is currently in the process of searching for a new airport manager. Can you give us your thoughts on the attributes that you think that that new manager should have and what their primary focus should be?
I think the, the focus would be on the business development that John mentioned. There would be a lesser focus on airport security, which I think is being imposed on us from the national level. In my personal opinion, that's exaggerated. The risk to a small airport, the risk of something happening as a result of a small airport is very low. Outreach to the community for other uses for the airport. Participation at the high school and college level for aviation training would be something that could be pursued. And I see the management of developing a new master plan is going to be a significant part of anyone's association with the airport.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate. Anything else that you'd like to say?
I want to thank you for having me this morning and wish you luck in your selection.
Thank you. And you're welcome to stay while we deliberate. Thanks. All right, I'm gonna bring this back to the board.
Okay. I think we had two very good candidates. It's, it's really a pleasure to see people in the community take such an interest to serve. And so it's a really tough decision, but I think that I would like to recommend John Rogers for the position.
I agree with your comments, Lori. I think we have two excellent candidates here. It's too bad we don't have two positions. I scored based on the answers to all the questions. It was very close, but, but John got a slightly better score, so I would second your recommendation.
And third, yes, both good candidates. Come back and see us again, Doug, because you obviously can help our community. But I'm gonna go with John Rogers.
Well, and I would agree. I thank you both for applying. And John, you scored slightly higher, so I think it's unanimous. So do we have a formal motion? Okay, thanks, Lori.
I move to appoint John Rogers to the airport authority manufacturer position to fill a term that will expire, sorry, she just, October 21.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. And one abstention. Thank you. I guess I'll hang on to the gavel for...
Yes, yes.
Let me just say, while I'm back to thinking, Adriana, I'd like to sit down longer with you about, maybe I could now go to, on these airport things. Maybe I can disclose, if I have to disclose and vote anyway, because I'll talk with you.
We'll discuss that. Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, on to item number 16. We're gonna recess as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the redevelopment authority. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum, and all are present. On to item number 18, public comment. Is there any public comment at this point in time? Seeing none. On to item 19, possible approval of the minutes of November 16, 2017.
Adam Chair, I would move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for November 16, 2017, as presented.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, on to item number 20. Lee, are you gonna take us through this?
Good morning again. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This redevelopment authority item, and then also there'll be an accompanying Board of Supervisors item, is to take action regarding the expenditure of $100,000 from the redevelopment fund to go into the downtown Curry Street State, Streetscape project. So you recall, and as in here, $250,000 was previously allocated in the budget for this project. As the tables, the attached table shows, and with the Board of Supervisors' approval to do the project all at once rather than spread it out over a number of years, we did a little shuffling of the, of the budget, used some budget savings to put into this project for this year so that the Curry Street project can get done in 2019. So this action would just add that $100,000 into that project.
All right, Board, any questions?
I just wanted to comment. Thank you, Lee, for stumbling over the word streetscape. I do the same thing all the time.
Is there any public comment with regards to this? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the Board.
I move to approve and recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving fund to support the downtown Curry Streetscape project for a total of $350,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving fund for the project as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan that has been adopted by the Carson City Board of Supervisors and based upon the findings that there is a causal connection between this redevelopment effort and the need for the expenses. The expenses, the expenses are needed to ensure the success of the redevelopment plan and that the amount of the expenses to be given are minor in comparison to the money required for the overall redevelopment plan.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. On to item number 21, public comment. Seeing none, we will adjourn as the redevelopment authority, and I will return the gavel to the mayor.
I'm gonna call the meeting of Board of Supervisors. Back to order. We're on now to item number 24. This is an, this is a companion item to what was just heard in redevelopment. Let the record reflect that we will, the record, the minutes will incorporate by reference all the discussion and exhibits relating to this item that was heard before the redevelopment authority. Anything else before the Board wants to bring up? Public comment on this issue? No, we'll take a motion.
Resolution number?
2017 R41.
I move to adopt resolution number 2017 R41, authorizing the expenditure of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving fund to support the downtown Curry Streetscape project for a total of $350,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving fund for the project as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan that has been adopted by the Carson City Board of Supervisors and based upon the findings that there is a causal connection between this redevelopment effort and the need for the expenses. Expenses are needed to ensure the success of the redevelopment plan and that the amount of the expenses to be given are minor in comparison to the money required for the overall redevelopment plan.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carried. Okay. Let's take up item 24, Bravo. This is to discuss and possible action on an ordinance amending Carson City Municipal Code Title IV, licenses and business regulations relating to the filing of a certificate required under state law to conduct business under an assumed fictitious name. Hope Sullivan?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, the Board. Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. We're gonna talk about business license. We don't do that too frequently. Our business license staff's actually deputized by the clerk's office to process a fictitious name certificates. This is done to allow the applicants to have a single portal. They can come to the business license counter and they don't have to make their way over to the clerk's office. Currently, the fictitious name certificate requires a notarization. This is our only hurdle to having online permitting for the business licensing. NRS does authorize the Board to allow for the filing of this certificate without requiring the notarization. And so we brought forward an ordinance for the Board's consideration to waive the requirement for, for notarization. Should you adopt this ordinance, ultimately, of course, this is first reading, staff is ready to move forward with online business license permitting. Thank you.
Questions? Supervisor about?
Hope, the only question I have is, in terms of any illicit business, does the notarization allow for one more level of scrutiny such that the person applying is, under a fictitious name, is actually the person that is conducting business? I'm just wondering, if we eliminate that, are we gonna open the door to a problem?
Thank you for that question. I actually was trying to decide how in-depth to go on this presentation. So staff doesn't see a downside to not having the notarization. Curiously, the fictitious name certificate doesn't have a qualitative review. And we just, we're by law required to maintain an alphabetical listing of them, but there is no qualitative review, and staff does not see any risk involved in not having the notarization.
I think that's one thing that we ought to, if this passes, and I assume it will, keep an eye on, because I know that, you know, there have been, in my years of practice, there have been times when somebody has filed at the Secretary of State's office because they didn't do a review either, and then it turns out, you know, that that person's really not a person. Or it's somebody, you know, there's somebody else. And so just, I agree with the concept, we need to get the automatic filing done. But I think we need to just be wary of if we get a complaint that says, hey, you know, this person's really not who that person is. So, okay. Supervisor, who's got, Supervisor Barrett?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about transparency here. Is that, you know, how's the public gonna know who this is?
The records will be as available after the online processing as they are right now today.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah. Public comment? Any other Board comments? Motion's in order.
Bill number 129.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 129, an ordinance amending Title IV, licenses and business regulations, as published on the agenda.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carried. Okay, let's take up item 24, Charlie. This is possible amendment to Title 18 Carson City Municipal Code, revising the definition of dwelling, single family and single-family dwelling, to provide consistency with state law. Miss Sullivan, you gonna do this again?
Yes, sir. Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. As the mayor just identified, the proposed amendment will result in the definition of single-family dwelling being consistent with SB 477, signed by the governor on June 3, 2017. For the most part, the definition that Carson City had in its municipal code was very, very, in large part, consistent with the state law. There's some wordsmithing to the extent, other uses like halfway houses, individual residential care, and residential facilities for groups are mandated to be included in those definitions. The definition of those terms and the limitations identified in the state law are included in the ordinance before you. Planning Commissioner reviewed this ordinance at its meeting of October 25 and did recommend approval by a vote of seven to oh. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take questions.
Questions are in order. Anybody? Public comment? It's one of these consistency issues. Cleanup. Okay. Motion's in order.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 130, an ordinance amending Title 18 in the Carson City Municipal Code to revise the definition of the terms dwelling, single family, and single-family dwelling, and other related terms for consistency with state law.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carried. Okay. Let's now take up another one for possible action to amend Title 18 to add a section 18.02.130, reasonable accommodation. Want to tell us what's going on here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I heard earlier in your meeting, you had references to the Federal Fair Housing Act, and so you know that that act prohibits discrimination housing on the basis of a disability. The, the intent of the act is to ensure that disabled people have an equal opportunity to enjoy their dwellings. What this proposed language would do, would, it would apply to the zoning ordinance and would authorize the community development director to make a reasonable accommodation in the case of a disability where that disability required modifications that maybe aren't within the letter of the law in terms of setbacks or something like that, but were necessary so that that person could continue to enjoy their dwelling. Commissioner Bunkowski did have some suggested language regarding incorporating into number two, the reference to the Carson City Municipal Code 1802060, which is appeals, which I'll read verbatim that language for the benefit of the Board and the clerk in a minute. But I will mention that the Planning Commission, at its meeting March 29, 2017, did recommend adoption of this ordinance by a vote of four to oh, with three absent. Should the Board want to include within the substance of this section, the reference to the appeal, the proposed language would stay under number two. A request for reasonable accommodation made pursuant to subsection one must be submitted in writing to the Director for approval or denial as an administrative decision, and here's the new language, which may be appealed in accordance with Carson City Municipal Code 18.02.06. The Director and then the rest of the language would be the same. So if somebody was reading this code section, they could readily see that there was an appeal opportunity. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Public comment? Good, good change. Okay, all right. Motion's in order. Somebody wanna do it?
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 131, an ordinance amending Title 18, zoning, chapter 18.02, administrative provisions, to add section 18.02.130, reasonable accommodation. It's amended.
There's a motion and a second. Everybody clear on the motion? On the motion, all in favor? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carried. Okay, let's take up 24, Echo. This is another zoning issue on Title 18, possible amendment to Title 18 to establish certain review standards relating to issuance of special use permit. Hope, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. Again, the legislature was busy. We have Senate Bill 314, signed by the governor on May 31, 2017, which essentially tells us that regarding private wind conversion systems, we cannot mandate a height. However, we may have regulations that, that prohibit the system should the system present, represent a danger to health, safety, and welfare, or be found to not be compatible with the character of the area in which the system is located. So the proposed ordinance in front of you is, is creating compliance with SB 314. It still requires a special use permit should the, should the requested wind conversion system exceed It still requires a special use permit should the requested wind conversion system exceed the height limit of the zoning district. So because we don't have a prescribed height limit, we default to our zoning district, and then we're in an SUP situation. The planning commission did review the proposed amendment at its meeting of October 25, 2017, and voted seven oh to recommend adoption of the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
As I expected, the lights went on up here. So there's no restriction on how high a wind?
There is a restriction, Mayor, and I can go right to the ordinance if you'd like, but what the, we included wording in the ordinance when we struck the wording that says the maximum height is 60 feet. Wording's inserted that says the height is limited by the associated zoning district. So, and we always talk about zoning means two things, right? Land use and dimensional criteria. One of those dimensional criterias associated with the zoning district is a maximum height. So if a wind energy conversion system was consistent with the height limitation of the zoning district, then they wouldn't need a special use permit. Should they want to exceed the height limitation of the zoning district, they need to request a special use permit.
And if, just for example, in the residential area, what's the zoning say in that, on height limits?
The height limitation for, let's say, SF6 is 26 feet, SF1A 32 feet, SF5A 40 feet.
Okay. Not to belabor the point, but do we know what the height of existing wind turbines are? We've got a couple in Carson City right now. If we don't know, I mean, it's kind of an oddball question.
We used to have, Lee Plemmons, we used to have a couple. One of them's been taken down. He didn't feel it was getting enough.
Which one?
The one on Washington Street. He took his down. He got approval on the residential, so I think there's still one up on the Hill, in the Hillview area, which 45, 45 feet seems to come to mind, but yeah, without looking it up, it's somewhere in that range.
All right. Okay, like, sorry, folks. Sue Fraser-Bonkowski, then Sue Fraser-Bowden, go.
We still have the ability, or are there restrictions in the, in the current regulations regarding private use wind energy systems for materials, construction materials, reflective materials, for noise, and for lot size? I thought that it had to be an acre.
You're correct. Page 257 of your packet includes the existing, existing language, and includes the standards for all wind energy conversion systems. The location says a minimum parcel size of one acre is required for the placement of any horizontal axle wind turbine. Vertical axle wind turbines are permitted on any parcel. I'll scan real quick to see if I see any material restriction.
Yeah, the basic answer is all those other standards still apply, so the only, only the section related to height is being changed.
And we would still have the ability to add additional conditions under the SUP if we thought they were appropriate.
Correct. If you needed to identify conditions of approval to meet the findings of fact, that is what would be necessary.
Under those conditions of fact, bird migration patterns, if the heights restriction is eliminated, we've, during Bob and my first term, we dealt with a scenario like this, and it was right in the path of a bird migration scenario. So is that still allowed to be a consideration under what we're doing?
It could be a consideration if they exceeded the height limitation of the zoning district, because we would then be in a special use permit situation.
Any other questions, the board? Go. Hang on one second. Public comment, anybody? Let me just say, and I suspect that members of the board have had the same inquiry. Sometimes when we get these wind turbines, they're, they could be terribly aggravating to your neighbors, and they're a cause for complaints. So if you're, I mean, if you're contemplating a wind turbine, it's authorized by law, but my strong advice to you would be to talk to your neighbors before you put something like that up.
And I'd just like to comment, we actually don't have enough wind in most of our locations to really make it economically worthwhile.
Yeah. And people would say, hey, you know, it's windy here all the time, but you're right. I mean, I've, I've heard, I've got the science on that one as well. All right. Sue Fraser-Bonkowski, go.
Yeah, and just going back to Karen's comment about migratory, bird migratory patterns, I would think that condition two is not compatible with the character of the area in which the system is located would probably qualify there.
Okay. Anybody else? Everybody okay? Mr. Link, they have wind turbines in Oregon? Any complaints?
They're mostly in rural areas.
Okay. All right. Uh, motions in order.
132. I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 132, an ordinance amending Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code to remove the maximum height limitation on private use wind energy conversion systems to establish certain review standards relating to the issuance of a special use permit for such systems.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Let's take up the last one on planning and zoning, 24 Foxtrot. Who's going to do this one? This is with respect to policies related to nomination and appointment process for planning commissioners. Mr. Plemmons, you doing this?
Sure. Thank you. I prepared the staff report, so I'll give an introduction on this. Mr. Morano can weigh in as necessary. As you remember, we brought back, we brought to you a month or two ago, some policies related to the duties of the planning commission, and to put those in writing and include them, and add some questions regard, to identify the qualifications of potential planning commissioners. At that time, the board gave us direction to come back with the, some proposal alternatives for the Board of Supervisors to nominate appointees to the planning commission, and to develop a process by which the board nominates them and appoints planning commissioners. So this is the last step. I think with this being resolved, we would then come back at a future, we're looking for your direction today, to come back with the appropriate ordinance to put it into Title 18, which is the section that covers the planning commission's duties and responsibilities and their, and their appointment. So, so we're getting direction to you as to the process, is how to phase this in. Generally, I think, I tried to put it, put it in a format that you could see, where you could see the table of the next four years, and then the following four years, as to which Board of Supervisors will be coming into office during those years, and which positions currently for the planning commission would be expiring. Hopefully, that's helpful for you to think about how you might want to phase it in, or just start from scratch this year, but with the ultimate goal being that, I think you would come to where there's actually, every other year, you have elections, one year it's two, and then next year it's three of the Board of Supervisors. So that's five planning commissioners, and then on those in-between years, you would have an out-large position open up that would, people would apply to the planning commission and come forward. So I think that's, that's the goal to get to for you, at least four years from now, and I think the question for, for you today is how you want to phase that in. And with that, with that direction today, we can, we can go back and prepare the ordinances to bring back to you. So with the phase, the phase in would be, just call it an alternative A here, we have two positions coming up in 2018 on the planning commission, which would coincide with one future at-large position, and a second one that, in this, if you notice, a three-year term, that would be just the one time only for that position, so that, that then corresponds with the mayor's appointment in 2021. But if you, so that's the idea today. If you have any questions of us, or any, want any clarifications, I'd be happy to try to answer questions.
We have some questions up here. Sue Fraser-Bowden, then.
Lee, pertinent to that, so we wouldn't have to appoint by ward necessarily, and we could reappoint some of the existing members, but I'm not clear on how many terms some of the members have served already, so I don't know, you know, what latitude we have.
That's not, that's not a complicating factor in, in that they've, the, I think one has served two terms, or a couple have served, are on their second terms of three possible, so there's nobody that's expiring off that has to come off at, at this point within the next year.
And then we're not locked into somebody from our ward we can appoint across the board, correct?
I think that was the idea. I mean, I think that's up to you, that, that's your discussion you have. We would just say that the, it's up to the supervisor to appoint, to nominate somebody for consideration.
So, under alternative A, my concern is that we would be voting on an issue that we would then not implement. It would be up basically to the next board to implement it. So for that reason alone, my preference is that we either choose alternative B, or we don't vote on this.
Right.
Because it doesn't make any sense to me to vote on something unless we're also going to implement it.
So you would implement the code that lays it out, so barring changing the code again.
For a future board, though. Right? Because we wouldn't then make those recommendations. It would be up to the new members of the new board.
So in alternative A, you would replace the two that are coming up in 2018? That, you would do that anyway? That's what you're saying? And then in 2019 would be the first year that the, whatever, two supervisors would, would nominate new? That's when it would start to be implemented.
Sorry.
So, I agree with Brad that either you go with alternative B, and that's not meaning that we won't select existing planning commissioners, it's just that we start the appointment process. So, I mean, I have no problem picking an existing planning commissioner. They're doing a good job, so that would be fine, with B.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Sadler? You want to weigh in?
Okay. You know, I've, I'm sure the board has heard this too, but you know, I've heard that, you know, that people are concerned that what we're doing here is trying to stifle public participation on these boards. I personally don't see it that way, but I, but I'm sensitive to those issues, because I think this board's been pretty careful about trying to make sure that we incorporate as many folks as we can in our community, get a broad breadth, a broad scope of opinion. So I just want to let people know, if this passes, it's not an attempt to squeeze down who gets appointed, or how that, you know, that we're trying to stop citizen participation. And then on that, Lee, what would happen if you took this issue and, maybe just for discussion purposes, on the, on the suggested agenda, took out the, took out, just took out entirely the recommended attributes of a planning commissioner, and just left the characteristics of a good commissioner there? Suppose you just took those out? I mean, it doesn't seem like, it doesn't...
Yeah, I think you need more, if you could be more specific on the, you're talking about the document that was before you last, the planning commissioner duties and responsibilities.
I think we're within the...
That's, I mean, it's your, it's your document to, to decide how, to put it, to implement it.
Okay.
Talk about this page.
I'm talking about where it says recommended skills and abilities, attention to detail and everything. If we took that out, and we just left characteristics of the ideal planning commissioner in. So I think they kind of duplicate each other. I'm not hard over on, on these, but, but I think that, and I know it's only recommended.
I would agree with that, Bob. I think that the characteristics define what you're looking for.
Yeah, and then leave out the skills and abilities. I mean, I think, I'm just trying to make sure that people don't think we're trying to squeeze it down to particular skills. I mean, each board member will have an idea of what, what potential appointee brings to the table, so we'll know that. That would be my, my recommendation of the board, so, and then we adopt Schedule B, correct? That's where I come from. Sue Fraser-Bowden.
I think I understand this, but I just want to ask this question. And under the circumstances that would prevail, or B, this would not knock an existing planning commission member off after, before their term is up? Am I correct?
Okay, so alternative B is to provide seven nominations, open up two positions for at-large, and provide five additional nominations.
I understand that.
Starting in 2018.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if a particular board member didn't want somebody on the board, they could knock them off before their term is up, is what you're saying, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not real pleased with that idea. I don't think you start a person on a term who's been approved by this board and then turn around and knock them off, because, so that's, that was my concern regarding this situation.
Well, one, I don't see how one person could, because we're still voting on each nomination.
Well, that's true, but if you only have one nominee before you, what you're saying is then if others didn't want to cut that person's off, they'd have to vote, so it still could happen. That's, that's what I'm understanding.
You, you have the ability to nominate that person yourself, though, so...
Right, but then perhaps you don't want to nominate that person yourself.
But that's your choice.
Yeah, it's your choice, but you're also cutting someone else off who we've already put on the board for a term that hasn't ended. That's, that's what I'm trying to avoid. Seems to me that's not a good face situation. Whether you support it or not, the board supported them in the majority under the old situation. That's all I'm bringing up for discussion.
Well, my, my sense is, is that, and I, I know it's not a part of this motion, but my sense is that the board wouldn't knock somebody off if somebody's in the beginning of their term, but that's my own two cents. And I think that the, the, being able to vote on it is a backstop to that one, but I'm sensitive to what you're saying, John. I just think, I'm, I just say I'm sensitive to what you're saying, but the vote of the board kind of mitigates in, in favor of it, because I think that the other side of that one is, if you don't do it, then, you know, why are we doing it at all?
Yeah, it's tough to phase in. I understand that. I just want to put it on the record now, then, that if we face that circumstance, another person nominated a person for our sitting commissioner's seat, I would vote against that, and in preference of retaining a person who already has a seat, because I just don't think it's a good faith position for the board to put somebody on. It's unlikely that it's going to happen. I understand that, but I'm just trying to foresee any contingency situations, so I would be one of those who would vote to retain somebody through their term.
All right. Mr. Sadler, come on. It's okay. Come on up. How you doing as a chair?
Oh, doing fine, sir. If I can remember to turn the mic on and off at the right time, but other than that, I think it's going pretty fine, sir.
Well, you know where the bathroom is. That's okay.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead. I see you shaking your head.
I'm just not sure exactly, because I came in a little late, because I read the agenda, but I, I believe it is that each board member would select a person for the planning commission, and then would there be a vote still of the five members?
There'd be a vote of the five members.
Okay, okay. Okay, I understand that. Just speaking as a citizen, currently, anyone that's a registered voter in Carson City could put in for the planning commission. And if you put in for it, it is a little stressful, whatever, but I mean, that's, if you do put in for it, you fill out a form, and you then come before the board, and I've made a point to make most of the appointments, when you're appointing someone, just to see who I'd be working with, and I, every time, I think there's always been at least two or three applicants, and so at that point, then you interview, and you hope that the majority of the board is interested and selects you for that board, for the planning commission. Kind of similar to running for supervisor, or mayor, or whatever, that you put your hat in the rain and interview and with your constituents, and if you're selected, you're, you're selected. My only concern with the appointment process, currently on our planning commission, we have two people with planning backgrounds. have two people with planning backgrounds. We have an architect. We have a retired person from, that was a planner and a mayor in another community. We have someone that works for the government, myself, and another person kind of at large. And it's a pretty good cross-section, but my only concern, if it's by appointment, how, unless you let a supervisor know you're interested, you're cutting a large swath of the people out from even having the opportunity to put in, except for the two at-large spots. So, that's covering that as well, I understand, but right now, all seven have the opportunity to come before you and be selected or not selected. So, that's just, as a citizen, my way of looking at it, that you're going to kind of narrow down the pool, and I don't think most people would be comfortable coming up and saying, hey, I don't know, if you're going to ask for applicants to come forward or whatever.
No, if this passes, Mark, this would be, the board appointments and then vote on each of those appointments. That would be done, so there'd be, there'd still be a board, a board vote on these folks.
I appreciate that as well.
And I get, you know, I get where you're coming from, that kind of mitigates ways towards, you know, keeping the existing process in. And, you know, I think, you know, what the board is trying to do here is trying to just say, you know, do some due diligence before you get in and even apply for the, particularly the planning commission, but all the boards.
Correct.
So, that you know what those, what those boards are doing, it makes you a more effective board member rather than learning on the fly.
Definitely.
And that's all, I think, at least from my perspective, that's where I'm coming from on it.
Yeah, and it was a learning process. I mean, for some of them, it's not, because they're coming out of the planning era and that sort of thing, but especially for myself or whatever, you know, I had to get it, when I was sworn in, got to Chapter 18 and read through it and all that stuff to get aware and understand what's going on, but...
All right.
Anyway, that was just my only point would be...
No, I'm glad you came up, Mark. It's fine. It's fine. Okay. All right. Board members, public comment, anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, Mark, before you go.
Hang on.
Before you go back. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're sort of raising a question of why not keep the current system, but since we're considering this, are you recommending if we go to this new system, that we still let it be known in the public that the time has come for a planning commission opening to be filled, and that those people still let City Hall know so that each person who's going to nominate has a pool to select from, so that it's not shut off?
If you're doing that, I don't know if it's necessary to select by each member. You're still...
Well, you're not selecting by each member, as the mayor said. You're nominating, and then the board is selecting.
Well, and again, unless you know someone, I mean, how, I've met all of you through debt management and golf course and whatever else, I've been fairly active and involved, but we have some new members that hadn't been involved at all. You know, I give them credit for just seeing an ad and deciding, let's, let's give a shot at this, or I'm interested, let's go do this. I guess they then, would they feel as comfortable, say, calling one of the supervisors to say, I'm interested? I don't, I don't know. And, but again, if the supervisors were to put out that it's my turn to select, you know, if you're interested, give me a call, I think that would be a, and a nice addition to it, kind of thing, to encourage people to maybe contact them if they're interested.
I imagine some supervisors would have somebody in mind, other supervisors might say, I want to look at a pool.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm quite sure of that.
So, what I'm asking you is, you suggesting that we retain that system of advertising and having volunteers come forward?
That would be left up to the supervisor, because I'm sure they would advertise the opening that, say, mayor is going to be selecting or so-and-so. I would imagine that would be advertised, or maybe it didn't have to be. I'm not sure how that would be...
Well, I don't think at that juncture, it'd be handled the same as we do the Board of Equalization, where we each, everybody gets an appointment, gets a nomination, and then it's voted on here. So, we do that at the beginning of every, I think it's the beginning of every year, and then the mayor has the right to nominate the chair or that. So, it's not, it's not unusual that we do these things, so...
Oh, no. No, I understand. I understand.
All right. All right. Thanks. Okay. All right. Further public comment? Anybody? All right. Let's try motions, see where we go.
I move to direct staff to prepare applicable code amendments and policies to implement alternative B for the planning commission nomination and appointment process, removing from the planning commissioner duties and responsibilities the section labeled recommended skills and abilities.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing on all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay.
So, Mayor, the planning commissioner's terms, right, as they are today, end in June, so we don't have any terms expiring, so between, I'll get with the DA's office, between now and certainly earlier next year is when we'll implement it before that time.
All right. All right. Excuse me, what does the word implement mean? You'll bring it back to us, and then it'll be implemented, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Let's take up non-action items.
I just have one.
Go.
So, I just want to wish my dad a happy birthday today, because I know he's listening, so happy birthday, Dad.
That's good.
And I just want to mention that December 16th is Cookies with Santa, which benefits Toys for Tots and Ron Wood Foundation, so from 11 until 2, and Santa will be there, so, at Adele's.
Did Santa bring cookies for the mayor?
You want to sit on his lap.
No comment.
No comment, man.
That's a no comment. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to, while we're talking about things, I'd like to compliment the Chamber of Commerce and all, and the state, and our public work staff for a wonderful Silver and Snowflakes event this past December 1st. It was a wonderful night, and the lights are just phenomenal. People haven't been downtown to take a look. It really is rather amazing what the Capitol does, and it's a good sense of community, as we always use that term. You drive down Carson Street, you'll know what everybody's talking about when they say sense of community, so, John, go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo what you said on the lighting ceremony. I'd also like to recognize the prayer this morning and the presentation regarding the charters of freedom on Pearl Harbor Day. It's fitting and appropriate. This is a very sacred day in my men, in my way of looking at things, and my father made sure I looked at it that way.
Just thought of one more thing. I just want to go on record to thank all of our first responders in Carson City that are working diligently to help with Holiday with a Hero. I just want to give them a big shout out and thank you for their efforts.
Good, good point, and we also ought to thank our public works, or firemen for, because some of them are down in Ventura County right now. And, you know, that's what happens. I mean, that fire is terrible, so, you know, everybody's doing their best to keep things going here. Anything else but come before?
Non-meeting.
Yeah, we'll have a non-meeting at 1 o'clock, and so the door, so for everybody, the door will be closed. Don't think we're having a secret meeting in here. We're having a non-meeting meeting.
It's secret.
That's an odd way to put that stuff, a non-meeting meeting.
Just to clarify, it's not subject to the open meeting law.
Not subject to the open meeting law. Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Let's be adjourned until 1 o'clock, and we'll come back here.